Yeah, thank you. So I just want to make sure we can begin. I have a lot to read this evening. Um, I'm supposed to make sure that we can out hear each other as we just fixed. So, um, Caleb, I trust you can hear me this evening?
Yes, you're good.
All right, um, I see Amanda Gage. I see Easton Clayton, Town Hall presenter. Uh, hi, Caitlin. Can you hear me and see me?
I can hear and see you.
Hi, thank you. Okay, who else do we have? Mr. Jones, hi Peter, how are you, sir?
Good, how you doing?
Good, thank you. Um... Mrs. Chaco, how are you, sir?
Good evening, everybody.
All right, we have Chaco on the line. Okay, so let me go ahead. I'm just going to begin reading my script here. I apologize if we're getting a little bit of a late start. I'll do my best to make sure we say the petition is possible and we'll keep things moving in a steady manner. So before I begin, um, welcome to the Thursday, May 21st, 2020, 5:00 PM, remote meeting participation of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. For those of you who may be listening one way or another, you can call 1-646-749-3112, enter the access code 944-571-349, or go to your computer, mobile.got.gotomeeting.com, join and enter the access code. So again, I apologize. Um, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open.
Thank you, Mr. Chaco. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. K. Jones and I. Mr. Cussey?
Uh, aye.
Uh, we got Mr. Chaco, Maggie Rogers, the president this evening, Mr. Maron?
Mr. Maron's not with us.
President this evening. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Thank you. So again, um, as we begin our meeting, you're going to notice that we do not have Ms. Rogers or Mr. Um, Maron with us this evening. So therefore, we're going to be moving up Mr. Jones and Ms. Bush, the voting members. I just want to make everybody aware of that. So, uh, to confirm number access, as a preliminary matter, my name is Robert Tatro, Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals, in an effort to reduce background noise. I'm going to ask that you all please mute your phones at this time unless you are using them, as I am, and only unmute if you're going to speak. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons of the agenda can hear me. Um, and then I already did that when I call your name in the affirmative. Uh, town officials and employees participating when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. As Building Commissioner Caleb Moody.
Here.
DDIS Director Dolly Coyle.
Here.
Am I going to have Tom Snyder, Adam Minar?
Here.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any other town representatives here this evening with an interest in the meeting that would like to identify themselves?
Bill Coyle is also here.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Okay, so introduction to the remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals, made Thursday, uh, Thursday, May 21st, 2020, now called the order. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor's biggest executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Colorado to suspend public gatherings. As such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law for all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, to which you can find posted with the agenda chairs for this meeting on the town's website, allows public bodies to be entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. To this meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals is convened by remote participation for the public only. Although some staff may be physically located in the select least meeting in the town hall, the report should not practice social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely, as I had mentioned earlier, please call 1-646-749-3112 and enter the access code 944-571-349, or the public can join via computer, go to meeting.com, join 944-57349. The remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. Do I have anyone else in the meeting this evening that is recording? You only have to answer if it's in the affirmative, and by law, you have to disclose it, but we cannot deny you from recording the meeting. Do I have anybody that is recording the meeting this evening? I'll give it a five, four, three, two, one. I do not have anyone recording the meeting this evening. Thank you all, proceed. Okay, so calling me, those members of the Auburn Zoning Appeals, employees, and members of the public participating, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anybody you broadcast may be captured by recording. Meeting materials, all supportive materials that have been provided by the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Robert Tatro, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. As they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members. Inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Uh, that's one thing that we did run into last time, so please, if we could be careful about, um, sort of jumping in and being cognizant of your mute button, please. So please also remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each name and afford three minutes of comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. If we have technical difficulties, chair will suspend the meeting while attempts to resolve are made, and to keep accurate minutes, note any disconnections or reconnections of members. Okay, so I believe I wrote all three pages there. Hopefully, that was fairly successful. I really like, uh, Caleb's choice of, um, of masks tonight. Pretty appropriate. So do I have, I have a 5:00 hearing, and I apologize for running late again. Applicant Daniel Campbell requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.10 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment improperly located at 75 Prospect Street, Auburn Mass, Mass 67, parcel 7, and this is a continuation from 4/23/20. Is the applicant present?
Uh, yes, I am present.
Thank you. Uh, members of the board, do I have a motion to open the hearing? Please identify.
Motion to open the hearing.
That would be Mr. Chaco. Do I have a second?
Second, yeah. Richard Cussey, second.
Thank you, Mr. Cussey. I have a second for Mr. Cussey. Um, so, uh, I'm going to go with, um, Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So, uh, meeting is open, so I see that we have a letter and text submitted. Uh, if the applicant is on his microphone, if you could please go over what we had discussed in the past and bring us up to present on what you would like to try to accomplish.
Uh, yep, so, uh, last meeting, I tried, I explained I was looking to do a small accessory apartment above, uh, detached garage, um, and, uh, I think the issue was that the garage, uh, the apartment wasn't in the, uh, in the existing structure, so, uh, he said if there was a way to build a breezeway of some sorts to connect the garage to the existing house, um, that I think he said it would, it would be fine in that way, and that was considered one structure. So, um, I think I submitted a, a little drawing of a sign of a breezeway to connect the two. Um, so I was hoping that that would be, uh, that would make care of the issue.
Okay, uh, before I begin the conversation here, are there any of Butters present that would like to introduce themselves and, uh, talk about the project? I actually didn't hear a little bit of background noise, I'm just going to be careful. Uh, one more time, is there any of Butters present that, um, would like to speak on this project? Okay, so I'll give the five, four, three, two, one. Hearing none, saying none. Um, can you describe the length of what that, um, breezeway would be with the deck, I believe, to the right?
Uh, so I'm not exactly sure quite yet. It'll all determine based, like, once I have the survey done and I know all the exact setbacks and things, but I'm guessing it's going to be somewhere around 35 feet or so.
Okay. I'm not sure. I'm going to, I'm going to open this up to the other members of the board, first of all. So we'll start from the top as we always do. Uh, Mr. Cussey, can you hear me, sir?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cussey, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Um, I have none right now.
Okay. Mrs. Chaco, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman. Um, to the, to the applicant.
Yes, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do. To the applicant. Um, I'm trying to make the stretch, that the picture I see here, um, because of breezeway. Uh, that's kind of not what I, what I have always thought of as a breezeway. It's not enclosed. All it is, is a, it's a covered walkway, that's all. That is, that is one thing that doesn't meet with my approval. And the second thing is that where is, um, please tell me where the second means of egress from this apartment is going to be?
Um, so for the second part, the second means of egress is a, um, there would be a staircase out of the back of the, um, garage from the second level to come down. So, uh, for a set of stairs inside the garage to lead up to the apartment or out, and then a second exterior set of stairs to leave the apartment would be the second, um, egress. And then it's, I'm sorry? And it's, um, the breezeway, I mean, I'm not really sure what qualifies as the breezeway or not. I mean, I can certainly close the breezeway in or enclose it, I mean, whatever, I mean, whatever I need to do, I can probably make work, so, um, if I need to enclose it at all, I can.
That is, oh, that is indeed what I have always thought of a breezeway would be, closed with a knee wall and windows and, and, and enclosed. Now, the second means of egress. Okay, does that go right directly to the outside, to one you just described?
Uh, yes, so as soon as you were to leave the apartment, that would bring you directly outside. It's the, the actual staircase would be on the exterior, on the back side.
Okay, and what I'm looking for, when, when I use the term breezeway, is, is more of a permanent structure than what I'm seeing here. Excuse me.
Well, he wanted to put a garage. He didn't want to attach it to his house, but there's a... I lost them for some reason.
You know, a, a breezeway in, in my, in my personal definition is an attachment between a garage and a house. I don't see, what I see is it attached to a deck.
Yeah, so the, the image of the picture, I have the deck, it's a corner of my house right there, so, I mean, I, I can either, I can attach it to, I mean, my deck is attached permanently to my house and everything, so I was going to just attach it to that corner of the deck, but if I need to go a little bit further to actually tie it to the, the.
I'm looking for a semi-permanent, I'm looking for a semi-permanent structure that's attached to your garage and attached to your house.
Yeah, no, I, I mean.
I'm sorry, can I interject for one minute? So, um, Mr. Chaco, so I think I'm agreement with you, but in, in the interest of expediting, keeping the meeting on schedule, I want to defer that to the commissioner to determine what we consider to be an appropriate breezeway versus walkway versus et cetera. Can we do that for a minute and then come back to it?
Okay, if you do that, then we've already voted on it and, and approved it and put a condition on it then. As it sits now, I, I would not be in favor of approving it. So that, that puts us in a, in a little bit of a situation. If he can, if he can attach it on both ends, then we could put it as a condition.
Through the chair, Larry, I think he was just looking for an opinion from the building commissioner, not condition.
Very good.
So through. Okay, um, what I want to do is, I'm going to, I'm going to set that, I, I want to set that thought aside for one minute with the intention of bringing it to be the focus, but I want to speak to the other two members that are participating right now. And then we're going to have, uh, Caleb go ahead and just give the entire group the definition of what would be considered a breezeway. So, Mr. Jones, do you have anything other than the breezeway concern that might, you would like to speak with the applicant about?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I, I just want to know, um, what language we're looking at when we're taking a look at this birthday. Um, in a language in 9.3.12 is substantially contained within the structure of a single family dwelling. And that's, that's the part, that specific language is what's gripping us up here.
Right, we are actually under 3.2.2.10.
So this is not about an accessory apartment?
Well, it is, but the applicant requested a special permit under 3.2.2.10.
Through the chair, that is, that's just a number in the table of uses. They still have to meet all the conditions of the accessory apartment.
Correct. Okay, so, um, Ms. Bush, do you have any specific questions other than regarding the definition of what we consider a breezeway for the applicant?
Uh, none at this time.
Thank you. All right, so Caleb, I'm going to, um, yield the floor to you, sir, for a moment for your expertise, and we can discuss the finer points of what we consider a breezeway.
So, through the chair, a breezeway is defined as a roofed outdoor passage between a house and a garage. It would be up to the zoning board's decision as to whether this was, this met the definition of the bylaw. That's up to the board, and the board would need to vote on that, whether it meets the definition in the bylaw.
Right, it is, it is certainly pretty vague. All right, so again, we're going to go back around, um, now that we know what the definition is. Um, I'm going to return to Mr. Cussey. Do you have any comments, questions, or statements regarding the breezeway issue?
Yeah, I, I agree with Larry. I'd like to see, you know, a foundation or a knee wall and have it enclosed and, um, make it more part of the house in the apartment, you know, the combination. Yeah, this just doesn't, uh, this doesn't satisfy me, uh, what we see here now.
Right.
Would like, a, a more permanent structure.
Okay, is there anything else you would like to add?
That's it for now.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Chaco, now that we have discussed the definition, um, can, can you go ahead and revisit your conversation with the applicant, please? I yield the floor.
Um, I, I pretty much stand with what I've said. If the, if the applicant has anything to add to it, that I, um, what I consider to be a breezeway. The picture I'm looking at just shows, uh, the back of the house and a little bit of the deck outside of the garage.
Right.
And I am looking for a, a semi-permanent, uh, and I use that term semi only because I don't, I don't say that it has to be fully heated, uh, but it has to have some sort of foundation and knee wall, as Mr. Cussey had, had put in there, and it's got to be attached.
Okay, so, can I, do you consider, I'm sorry, Caleb, were you going to speak? Or was that the app?
No, it was the app. Do you mind if I jump in for a minute?
No, please go right ahead, sir. You can respond to Mr. Chaco.
Uh, yeah, I just kind of wanted a general overview. So, it's hard in the drawing to see because of the way the, the computer design thing, the views, um, but the, the breezeway that I had designed was open to the air, but it, it would be, I would need to put in, you know, four-foot footings in, uh, whether that be concrete footings or those metal techno post footings driven into the ground every so many feet to hold the structure. And then I was going to have, like, a full roof on it with shingles and everything, and have the shingles and things tied into, you know, the side of the garage where the siding meets and all that. And then on the other, have it tied in as well, you know, tied into the four-by-four posts onto the deck and things like that, to make it a permanent, you know, a permanent structure. Um, the other thing is, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to just as well save costs as much as possible at the same time, uh, because this is a very large garage, so I'm trying to not spend extra where I don't necessarily need to, if possible. Um, if maybe knee walls, would it be acceptable if I did, like, um, uh, like, maybe like railing systems on each side in between all of the posts or something like that, possibly? Um, it might, you know, save me a little bit of cost. I can buy a vinyl railing for, you know, a hundred something dollars for framing it in and sheet rocking it and, and window costs and, and things like that.
Right. I do understand the cost you're concerned with. I mean, and I'm just, I, I believe me, I am absolutely not an expert when it comes to this stuff, and I know that, you know, especially right now, everybody is trying to be very cautious with costs associated with things. Um, but I think what, if I can speak for the two members that are expressed concerned, is they're looking for more of a year-round, sort of a, uh, a year-round passageway, if you will. Um, so, I would suggest that maybe if we can come up with some kind of a reasonable idea that might satisfy that, then, uh, Mr. Cussey, to you, sir, would that be something you're more interested in?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, uh, Ms. Chaco?
So there's, if I understand correctly, the applicant is proposing to have a railing system in between the posts, so.
Right.
So wind and, and snow and rain would be able to just blow right through there.
Right, so my comment was, before we began this section, was that I thought the two, the two applicants that expressed, or the two members that expressed the most concern, um, would prefer to see a year-round type of structure, a weatherproof structure. Is that correct?
That is correct. Because I, I, I do believe that in general here, as far as what any one of us may know or think of as a breezeway, um, we all probably think of the house and a 10-foot breezeway attached to a two-car garage, a typical garrison colonial with a two-car garage. Calling this a breezeway, we're really stretching to do that.
I do see your point. Um, hmm. Again, I think that, you know, if we're going to go by what the bylaw says and what Caleb has read to us, um, my other question is, can we move forward? Do you have anything of the, the finished structure from the, to, that would be to the right of the deck? What is the, uh, garage in addition to the front? Of the garage of the apartment?
Through the chair, I think, through the chair, what you're looking at is.
I understand your question.
Through the chair.
One second, Larry, please.
What you're looking at is.
Yes, sir.
What you're looking at is a deck on the house with a covered, covered walkway leading, leading to the new garage and apartment.
Right, now I get it. I understand. So the deck to the right is from the back of the house, traveling left to the addition, uh, and that is, okay, I get it. I mean, what?
So, through the chair.
It's not bad looking.
Through the chair, even if the, even if the breezeway is closed in, it's still attached to an open deck.
Right, right. And I see your point there. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to, I don't know where you want to go with this. So what I'm going to do is go around the horn one more time. Um, Mr. Cussey, do you have any comments, questions, concerns for the applicant at this time?
Um, no, I'd just like to see a more permanent structure, like, uh, Larry's saying, tied into both buildings, uh, you know, because of the wintertime, uh, passages often will be, so that's, that's what I'm looking for. Something more permanent.
Okay, um, I'm going to move over to Mr. Chaco, sir. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns for the applicant?
Oh, not, at this time, nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Uh, no, I'm just, I, I, one thing, I just want to reiterate the importance of 9.3.12. When you take a look at this, it is within the structure of a single family dwelling, so whatever this conception is going to be, it needs to be something that makes the garage part of the structure of the existing house. So they could essentially have a single structure.
Yeah, and we're, we're really stretching it. I, I, I do know what you're saying here. Okay. So I think, um, Mr. Jones, with emphasis added to be concerned with 3.2.12, I agree with that. Um, so I'd like all the other members to kind of keep that in mind. And then, uh, last but not least, certainly, uh, Ms. Bush, do you have any comments, questions, concerns for the applicant?
Uh, no, I agree with, um, all the other members. I think we need to have a more permanent enclosed structure.
Okay, um, so, um, Mr. Campbell, are you, are you here? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So I think, um, although they don't seem to be opposed to your project, I think you've heard the concerns of the board. Um, if, what is your, uh, I think intent from this point forward? Do you want to come back again with another set of plans? Do you want to pursue a vote this evening? I really leave those things up to you. Um, so if you want to advise the board on which way you'd like to proceed?
Um, I mean, if the board, you know, needs to see another, I mean, if the only way for me to get this, this, this whole setup and building and everything done is to build an enclosed breezeway, then I will certainly just build whatever type of enclosed breezeway I need to build. Um, so, I mean, I don't know.
I'm gathering from, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I think what I'm gathering from information in the board is the deck is not really satisfactory, because even if you do enclose the breezeway, then the deck becomes an open passage from your house to the garage slash apartment. So I think that's really what the board is having a problem with. It may not necessarily be the length as much as it is the, um, I think I refer to it as the committed construction and, um, to the point that it has to be tied into the original existing structure.
Okay.
So I do apologize, but I think those are the things that, you know, we, we can't stretch the definition of a bylaw to the point where, 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 um, you know, we're derogating the intent and purpose of that bylaw, because that, that's something the board is actually in the position to, uh, kind of defend and uphold.
Okay, so since the back corner of my, back corner of my house is the back of the garage, I can connect this in, I can connect this breezeway through the garage? Is that, that's literally, that's the only.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds to me the way the board wants it is, they want to connect it to each structure, and they want it enclosed.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it, it can be done, for sure.
Okay, so if you would like to request a continuance, we can put you on the agenda for a future meeting, and then I can ask the board to accept that, and we can move forward.
Okay, yeah.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is Larry Chaco. I think.
Yes, sir.
For my purposes and for the applicant's purposes, I think it would be better off, even if it was just on this CAD program that he must have used, to show us, so we both know with the same understanding, okay, to show us at the next meeting what he would be considering our interpretation of the word breezeway was, and what we've added to that also as our interpretation. that also as our interpretation, so to show us again another picture, um, which he wouldn't really be incurring any cost for that, that would, uh, take away any doubts that we might have as a board before we voted on it.
Okay, so, my question to you, for the purpose of the applicant's ears, would be, would be like an aerial view better for you, so like, if we saw the top of the garage, we saw the top of the breezeway, we saw the top of the existing home, sort of in the yard layout, I think that might help, what do you think about that?
Um, sure, it might help, it, as long as, going into what, what the applicant should bring us next, anything that he may have doubts of, or that he thinks we could, quote, pick on, we're not really picking on anything, but, any doubts that we might have, whatever he brings us for a picture, um, would take away any of the doubts that we might have.
Okay, I appreciate that input, Mr. Chacolo, um, Mr. Campbell, did you, um, did you hear and, uh, understand Mr. Chacolo's comments?
I did, yes.
Okay, so, um, could you officially request a continuance?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to request a continuation, please.
Okay, so, members of the board, we have a request for continuance from the applicant to the, um, June meeting, whatever date that might be, do I have a motion on the floor to accept the applicant's request for continuation?
That'll be June eighteen.
June eighteen, thank you, Caleb, for the record.
Yeah, this is Rich Cuskey, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cuskey, do I have a second? Okay, Mr. Chacolo, do I have a second? Uh, okay, do I have a, Mr. Jones? To accept the motion on the floor to continue the meeting until the June meeting.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Jones is an affirmative, Ms. Bush?
Yes.
All right, and Ms. Bush is an affirmative, and myself, Robert Tate to the chair, is an affirmative, so, Mr. Campbell, uh, we look forward to seeing you in June, I think you kinda have an idea, at least we're, we're doing our best to work with you here, um, so hopefully you can answer some of the board's questions, and we'll, we'll see you next month.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much, have a good evening, stay safe.
You too, yep, you too, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna give, um-
Through the chair.
Just like a minute, not even really, yes, sir.
It looks like Mr. Maron did join us, so he should be available for the next hearing.
Yes, he did, that is correct, so for just some administrative purposes, um, Mr. Maron was able to join us a little bit later, um, I was informed of that, so we're gonna change the background order, if you will, and, this Bush will-
Can you hold on one second?
Through the chair, the, through the chair, the hearing's been continued, it does not need to be closed, the hearing's been continued, it does not need to be closed.
Okay, thank you so much.
As soon as you're ready.
Okay, so, um, back to that, so what we're doing is, as far as administrative responsibility concerns, uh, Vice Chair, Mr. Maron has joined us, Mr. Maron, can you confirm that you can hear and see us?
Sure. Looking around, I can see and hear you.
Thank you, uh, you have somebody or whoever it might be in the background, turn around, you might-
Muted. Unmuted.
Chairman, I didn't, I didn't hear anything.
Uh, I just sounded like you had a lot of background noise, I wasn't sure if maybe you had a radio or something on in the back.
My neighbor's cutting his lawn, but I'll throw the windows down.
Muted.
Okay, so, um, we have a five-oh-five PM applicant, David Dolympio, requesting a special permit under section nine-point-three-point-twelve of the Apparent Zoning Bylaw, for an accessory apartment, I probably looked at a sixteen Meadowbrook Road, Auburn map, map thirteen, parcel twenty-seven, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Unmuted.
Motion to open.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo, makes a motion to open, do I have a second?
Yeah, this is Rich Cuskey, seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Cuskey, Mr. Maron.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, and Ms. Bush, uh, because you began the meeting with us, I'm not gonna ask you if you would be opening the meeting or the hearings, but I am gonna ask you for your input, because I value your input, uh, and I also value the experience that you will gain, um, so, again, Mr. Dolympio, are you present, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, if you can go over what you're trying to accomplish, based on the pictures you have in front of us, and then we'll open it up to either, uh, if you have any, a butler present or members of the board.
Um, looking to put a two-car garage with a, um, one-bedroom apartment in my apartment above it, and, I know it doesn't show it in that picture, but it will be attached and fully enclosed.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead then, since you seem to be done, I'm gonna go start with, um, our Vice Chair, Mr. Maron, do you have any questions for the applicant, sir?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like, um, a minute, not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Cuskey?
Yeah, how many square feet is this, uh, apartment?
Um, right now, it's, I believe, um, I gotta draw it up there, thirty feet by twenty-eight feet, and there'll be, uh, there'll be stairs inside the garage to access through the garage, and then one at the, uh, one at the connection going into the backyard.
Okay, so the square footage comes up, you're allowed seven-hundred, I believe it comes up to, like, eight-forty-eight?
Okay, um, do you, does that include, like, um, like the stairway inside, would you subtract that square footage?
Um, I don't believe so, I just, I went by the foundation side, so.
Okay.
I believe that's, we, we, that's generally how we go.
I did, I did have another picture, I don't know if you guys got it, I sent another, uh, drawing of what it would look like, the garage and the apartment, um, with, with the connection.
Is that something that popped up for us, I think we might have that.
Only two things.
Yeah, it should, it should be in the, I think I sent it PDF too, as well.
Yeah, this garage says twenty-five by thirty-five, right?
Location and-
Yeah, twenty-five by thirty-five.
That's a different drawing, that's the, um, the plot plan, I have an actual, like, from the archi, not the architect, but the, uh, print guy, he sent me just a simple sketch of what the garage level looked like from a top view-
Just in Meadowbrook?
Yeah, I see, you got, it looks like thirty by twenty-eight there?
Yeah, yes, right, yeah.
So, the thirty by twenty-eight, the actual footprint, I just wanna confirm to the members of the board, because we do have on your plot plan, proposed garage showing the twenty-five by thirty-five, and then we have, that can put the information of a thirty by twenty-eight in the submitted additional drawings.
Well, the original, when I originally did it, I didn't know it had to be attached, so I was, I was going with that size originally, but I found out it had to be attached, so we kinda shrunk it a little bit.
I mean, honestly, I see where the staircase is, and how it's gonna be going into the upstairs, and you're talking, it's a hundred and forty-eight square feet, that's, again, I'm gonna let it up to the members of the board to discuss further, but I just wanted to clarify that we know that it is the smaller the two footprints that it's gonna be referred to in the, uh, overall plans, so I'm sorry, Mr. Cuskey, back to you, sir?
Okay, and then one other question I had is just the parking space, you'll have two for your primary home, and you'll have one for your apartment?
No, there'll be two for the apartment as well.
Okay, all right, that's, uh, that's all I have for right now, thank you, sir, uh,
Mr. Chacolo?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this, the setback that you're looking at here, where you said there would be two parking spaces, that's a ten-foot setback?
What's?
Actually, yeah, that's a ten-foot setback, right? Actually, there's one place that shows a ten-foot setback, and there's another spot that it shows a fifteen-point-one and a fifteen-three setback.
Is that to me? I'm sorry.
To the applicant? Oh, yes, uh, to the applicant, yes, through the chair, to the applicant.
Okay, um, yeah, originally, that's, that was the original plan, but it's probably gonna be, setback's probably gonna end up being even more than that, because we're gonna shift it, shift it over to attach it to the house.
Okay, and that's where you said you were gonna make the attachment, what is that tack, attachment going to be?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a fully enclosed, it'll probably have, the foundation will probably tie into my house, and then it'll get built off of that, and then the roof lines, the roof lines will connect, or roof line and wall, whatever it ends up being, but it's gonna be, I mean, fully enclosed, fully attached, um, it's not coming down.
With a footing and a foundation?
Yeah, it'll probably, it's, we'll just run the foundation right to the, uh, the existing on my house.
Okay, in, in other words, so you're gonna be around mine the frost line with a four-foot one, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I actually got, I actually got a, um, a hill to dig into, so it's almost gonna be like a, the garage itself's gonna almost be like a full foundation, and then the house, the apartment will be built on top of that.
All right, and I'm sure, I'm sure you heard the previous discussion, so you had the benefit of hearing that.
Yes.
All right, and no further questions at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, do you have anything you'd like to speak to the applicant about?
Uh, I, I have no questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bush?
I don't have any questions right now.
Thank you, and I'm just gonna go back to the, uh, Vice Chair, Mr. Maron, do you have anything you'd like to add now?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, and so, um, to the applicant, so as it stands now, um, requesting for an accessory apartment, your square footage proposed exceeds our, our bylaw's maximum square footage, and so, what we would need to do if, if, if the board approved, uh, was to offer relief for that existing square footage, um, so my, my direct question is, is there a way that you can construct this to meet within the, the bylaw's square footage?
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean, without, and, and the reason why I ask it properly is without considerable hardship to your plan.
So, do, do the stairs take away from the square footage of the apartment?
Not, I don't believe so, we can, um, we can ask our Building Commissioner to, to confirm that that would be considered living space.
Uh, so, uh, before we move forward, um, Building Commissioner Moody, would you agree with the interpretation of the living space requirement, uh, presented by the Vice Chair?
I would say that the, the finished living space inside the apartment is the seven-hundred square feet.
Okay, so, but I do agree, and the average staircase, I mean, if we really, if I was to measure mine, you know, from my kitchen to my basement, thirteen stairs going down is probably about a hundred and fifty square feet, so, I mean, I, I don't know if a hundred and forty-eight square feet is something we should, I, I'm not sure of the value of that, based on the fact that the garage, if you go thirty by twenty-eight and then standard framing, the only reason I know this, I've recently went through it, is that thirty, I mean, you're, you're really looking at two full-size garage doors, that's kind of the minimum requirement you can do, and actually get two eight-foot garage doors, so you can pull a, you know, even a pickup truck-sized vehicle into the garage.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so, Caleb, what do you calculate, if, if that's in consideration, and we're removing the stairs, what do you calculate the, the square footage of this accessory apartment?
I, I don't believe we have a good set of plans for the accessory apartment, because what we have is not what it's building, so, if, if the board felt that they were worried about the size of the apartment, that's a condition of, it's a standard condition that it can't exceed seven-hundred square feet.
Okay, um, okay, that's what I was wondering if you were, so, okay, so, um, if the board's concerned is the seven-hundred to the eight-forty-eight, I believe it was, and plus or minus staircase, we can make that a condition, or we can request that the applicant come back, um, at the next meeting with a formal set of plans for the layout of the, uh, apartment disposal, uh, I'd leave those to the desire of the board.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I can just add one final point to my piece, and you can, and move on, and I won't speak to the other board members or what their appetite is, but, um, for, for me, I, I need a better set of plans to see exactly what we're looking at, but I, I'll, I'll use the caveat that I am comfortable in what the Building Commissioner has noted, that from a standard conditioning perspective, I think we can cover that, um, if we, if we move forward, um, but I, that's why I'm, I mean, I'm, I, I see the thirty by twenty-eight, I, I just, I just see a more comprehensive set of plans to see what this looks like.
Sure, I appreciate that, um, my other thing is, or, I guess, uh, thought is that, you know, at the same time, I think we can have the trust and confidence about Building Commissioner and Planning Board, or whatever it might be, before the applicant after us, that they could move forward, uh, based, and we can make a condition that reads off Building Code requirements and requires the Building Commissioner's signature before moving forward, um, and I just, suggestion, I'm, I'm kinda throwing it out there, but I certainly think we could make that happen too.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, I, I don't disagree, I think standard conditions will, will cover this, um, I don't have any additional concerns or questions relative to, uh, I, I'd like to see a better picture of this, but I think that we can cover it in standard conditions, so, I don't think that, um, I don't think that the, the requirement should be there for, for him providing a better set of plans before we would discuss moving forward.
Okay, so, I received the, uh, input of the Vice Chair, just before we move around, uh, anywhere further, Mr. Cuskey, do you agree with what was discussed?
I do, I agree, I'd like to see another set of plans also.
Okay, so you would not be comfortable moving forward this evening, you would prefer to have a higher set of plans with the addition layout in it?
Yes.
So I think what I understood is, I think Mr. Maron is trying to say that we should defer the need for the plans in lieu of allowing approval from the Building Commissioner, um, provided the metal, and we could make that a part of the standard conditions.
Okay, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah, okay, uh, Mr. Chacolo, how do you feel about that?
I'm comfortable with that.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Uh, I would prefer to see what it is that I'm approving.
Okay, um, uh, and then I'm just gonna go ahead and ask, uh, Ms. Bush, do you have any thoughts or concerns, but, express?
I think as long as it meets the standard conditions, I'd be fine with that, but I would like to see plans as well.
Okay, um, so I, I, I mean, I see, yes, of course you can.
Um, I did submit drawings of what it would look like.
Through the chair, I'd like to ask the applicant, I'd like to ask the applicant who he submitted the drawings to.
I submitted them to the town with everything to do this meeting, it came, I put everything in the package and sent it, we'll put it in the, uh-
So I do see, can I just interrupt for one second, if you look at the second page, I have a layout, so, there's a two-page staple document, I know you probably really can't see what it is, but this side here, um, it has the initial layout of the bottom of the garage going thirty by twenty-eight-
Yeah.
-with storage, existing foundation, et cetera, and then page two shows this here, like, I'm not sure if I'm gonna do this right, but, you get the idea.
The apartment.
Page two shows the layout, um, with a set of stairs, bathroom, a twelve-six by fourteen, with a, uh, closet, bedroom, accommodation, um, you know, basically a, like a kitchen, living area, um, and a very standard bathroom, shower, toilet, sink type thing, so I do see, I have the plan, I'm not sure- So I do see, I have the plans, I'm not sure if anybody else does, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Michael Maron, so, I'm, I'm, I have the same plans that you're referencing, I think that my concern, um, would be, and the one that's being displayed here, um, does not show attached, um, although I, I know on record that the applicant had mentioned that it will in fact be attached, but I think a more, a more comprehensive layout of exactly what the final plan would look like, um, would be something, and, and exact square footage would be something that I, I would wanna see, um, but for, just, just in consideration for my other board members to consider is that it, it's, it's for the plans that I'm asking for, um, specifically for the, for the square footage considerations and how the layout is on the law. But our standard conditions, um, would essentially dictate, um, what the final square footage would need to be, the full faith in the building commissioner and his office, um, to make sure that those are adhered to, so if the applicant adheres to those, then permits will be issued, and so that's why I, I suggest that, um, I think that we need a better set of plans to show exactly what that, this final product looked like, but I don't think that it needs to MP our progress tonight, because I think the standard conditions would allow us that safety of whatever's gonna ultimately be constructed, or have to meet within the standard conditions.
Excellent, well said, thank you for that input, Mr. Maron. Um, so I just wanna be clear for the members of the board, those listening at home, and those patiently waiting for their turn, um, it's not the concern of the layout submitted of the, uh, plan with the living room, bedroom, bathroom type thing, it's more concerned of the exterior and how it's gonna tie into the foundation, is that correct, Mr. Maron?
That's clear, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, uh, to the applicant, um, are you aware of what the vice chair has concerns and, uh, what they are looking for?
Um, nope. Um, yeah, I guess so, um...
Yeah, so basically what we're looking for is they're happy with the layout of the, um, you know, the design for the apartment footing, uh, footage so to speak, they're okay with the way you wanna build it, they wanna see how you're gonna tie this into the existing structure. So what they're saying is, if it goes to a vote, um, it is likely that they would pass this evening with conditions that you would be required to submit the final plan with it attached to your existing home, and that would have to be approved, we're gonna kind of sort of let the building commissioner, so to speak, do his job, and he's just gonna go ahead and review those plans, and if they're okay, it's gonna move forward, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I was waiting for this meeting to get approved, and then, um, I was gonna have all the prints drawn up, he was gonna do all the prints, and then, uh, you know, we were gonna move forward, um, I don't know if he can do that now with what we have for this footprint.
He can, that's what we're trying to make sure, before we decide to do anything like that, though, I just wanna make sure that all parties listening here this evening are on the same page, that we are, uh, it appears as though the board may choose to move forward based on the fact that what we have in front of us here, and in good state, that you would submit a complete set of plans to be reviewed by the building commissioner prior to any permits being issued.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't have to do this meeting again, just supply the, uh, prints?
You mean to tell her you don't like these meetings?
Well, I mean, I lose money, I gotta get out of work early, you know?
No, yeah, that's exactly what it means. What it means is if we decide to approve it this evening, you would go ahead and get your final plans drawn up.
Oh, yeah.
You would go to see Caleb at the town hall, provided Caleb has no issues, and you met all the standard conditions and any requirements that we attached this evening, then you could go ahead and move forward without coming to a future zoning board meeting.
Okay. All right, so after this, I can go ahead, I can go ahead and tell them to do the prints, and as soon as I get them, I'll, I can bring them down, or, I don't know if you guys are even gonna be open, I don't know.
You have a draft?
So they can, they'll make arrangements, you can reach out through the other standard contact terminals, you know, whether it be phone call, email, et cetera, et cetera, and they'll certainly reach out to you, the town hall is very good at, um, adapting quickly to the, uh, you know, the current concerns, so, um, they've already demonstrated their ability to be very flexible.
Does he have, sorry, does he have, um, a number, direct number I could call him at? I could reach him at?
They, yeah, they can arrange that after the hearing or after the meeting, you can set up, you know, with Caleb, and, um, so in the interest of keeping this meeting moving forward and the applicants we have waiting, you can kind of exchange all the information afterwards.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may just clarify, I think what, what's before the board, um, is, is if, if we chose to move forward, um, we could condition that plans are required. If there are board members, um, that feel in contrast to that, that they want a requirement of those plans before they vote, um, I won't speak to any of them, I know Mr. Jones had mentioned he certainly wants to see plans, um, but I, I think that, that the hinge gate is that the risk is low for us, just my opinion, the risk is low for us based on, we can condition the fact that this applicant would be required to set, submit a more substantial set of plans, and that they would have to meet standard conditions based on size requirement, and so I think the risk is low for us to move forward, but I do think that those would be the two choices for the board, is either we move forward or we require plans before we move forward.
Correct, and again, I appreciate your consistent help with, helping me clarify things, 'cause sometimes it's not always easy. So, um, I wanna refer to Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, um, given all this enlightening conversation we've just recently had, um, have yours, has your opinion changed at all, or even if you were to go to the town hall and review the plans or have them emailed to you, um, would that be something that would satisfy your requirements? All right, are we experiencing...
I lost the mic, it was pretty bad.
Oh, I'm sorry, hang on one second, sir, you're kinda coming up broken up, could you start over? I think he's having the same problem that I had, we lost the audio on him. All right, so I'm gonna request a... Whoa. All right, so my screen shows Mr. Jones is being muted. Uh, okay, now it shows him as being unmuted. Mr. Jones, can you hear me?
I can't talk, it's just, I, I, I can hear you, I, I missed a big chunk of what you were saying before you, you pushed me to speak, so I don't know what I'm being asked to respond to.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Maron and I had spent a couple of minutes clarifying what we're gonna actually move forward with, and Mr. Maron did a great job boiling it down basically to two things. Um, you and Ms. Bush expressed concerns, they wanted to see finished plans, Mr. Maron is of the opinion that, um, we are experiencing a very low risk of issue with this, granted that we, if we give Caleb the authority to just move forward, examine the finished submitted plans, um, in the interest of expediting this process.
Through the chair, I do have the submitted plans up on the screen now.
All right, you guys. All right, so we're not talking, wait, I think we have those submitted plans up on the screen, those are for the layout of the apartment, what we're, I think, addressing now is whether we can, um, move forward with just allowing them, so you can see the tie into the existing foundation and sort of see our eyes on scene within the current situation of remote meetings.
Understood.
Again, Mr. Jones, going back to that, we hear where I'm at?
Yeah, take a look.
I think Mr. Jones is trying to speak.
That's what I'm waiting to find out, yeah?
Yeah, so, I, I gotta, I wouldn't mind having, um, you know, an approved subject to the condition that, uh, Caleb Moody, uh, take a look at it and make sure that the math works out and falls, uh, you know, under, under 700.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Bush, so given all this conversation that we've had, do you have anything you'd like to add, input, or do you think your concerns would be met if you about to vote?
Uh, yeah, I think the concerns are met, I think we'd be fine going forward.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so again, just for the record, um, um, I think we boiled down pretty well what we're trying to accomplish here, um, if we don't have anything else to add, I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, uh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second for Mr. Chacolo and Mr. Cuddy.
Yeah, I'm good on closing it.
Mr. Jones?
Good to close.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, do I have a motion on the 505 proposal for the special permit before us for a, uh, accessory use apar-, uh, excuse me, I just wanna make sure I read correctly, accessory use apartment and addition four, please stand by. Okay. I have so much paper here, I apologize.
Through the chair.
Yes, please, thank you, bail me out, Caleb.
So we'd be looking to entertain a motion for the applicant David Dolapino requesting a special permit under section 93.12 for Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment on property located 16 Meadowbrook Road, Auburn, Mass., map 13 parcel 27.
That is correct, and we would also like to add that, uh, it would meet all current required special condition, um, special permit issuance, and the final submitted plans must be reviewed by the building commissioner and given approval before any permits can move forward or any activity on the block can be placed. Um, anything, anybody wanna add, Mr. Maron?
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I would just, uh, make the motion, uh, to approve as stated with standard conditions and comments that have been recorded.
Excellent, uh, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. Mr. Cuddy, how do you vote?
I approve.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Jones, how do you vote? Mr. Jones, you're muted. Okay, you're unmuted now, nope, now you're muted again.
Approve, approve, approve.
Okay, I get you now, keep that on for a minute, thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Jones approves, Robert Tater, chair approves, so, uh, to the applicant, uh, I'm sure you can get together with Caleb, uh, they'll make final arrangements, you can, um, exchange points of contact, and when you're prepared with your final submitted plans, uh, you can make arrangements to either drop them off or meet in accordance with the, uh, governance guidelines.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir, have a great evening. Uh, if everybody wants to take about a one-minute break while I shuffle my stuff, and we'll move on to the next hearing.
So I'm good to go, right? I don't need to stay here?
Uh, yes, sir, you're all set, you can disconnect, and thank you very much for your time, we appreciate your, uh, patience.
Okay, thank you. See you all.
Okay, so, um, it seems like we quieted down pretty quick, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the 510 applicant, Eastland Partners Incorporated, requesting a comprehensive permit on the map general law, chapter 40B for workforce housing apartments on properties located at 109 Picky Hill Road, map, uh, Auburn, Mass., map 59 parcel 8 and 26, Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65 parcel 071, is the applicant present?
Yes, we are, man, we are, man.
All right, so, um, before we begin, you have a lot of, uh, feedback, so I'm not sure if you have multiple microphones open, or maybe people are close by and you're using the phone service, but just to be aware, you have a lot of feedback. So can I have a motion to open the 510 hearing, please?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cuddy, open.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy.
I'll second Mr. Cuddy.
Thank you, Mr. Maron was the second, so I have a, Mr. Cuddy has a, uh, motion to open, Mr. Maron is the second, uh, Mr. Jones?
Approve.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chacolo. Thank you. Okay, so, um, if the applicant can just go over what you would like to accomplish and what you're here for, um, and then we can open it up for discussion, members of the board, or if Cabney, uh, Abner is present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is Logan Huffman with Eastland Partners, am I coming through okay?
Sure you are.
Well, thank you for the opportunity tonight, uh, to present our proposal for the reserve, a 324-unit workforce rental housing community with amenities located at Blaker and Albert Street, under the, uh, local initiative program, become a local initiative project, uh, along with the town hall. My point tonight, or, I'd say, following your lead, is I'd first like to, you know, briefly, uh, explain who we are, Eastland Partners Inc., then I'd like to move on to kind of the history of, to this point, and then from there, to my associate Clay Williams, talk about, uh, the work that was done from a municipal impact, kind of point of view for the community, so we could understand what a development like it means for the community, and then from there, I would turn it over to our engineer, uh, Stephen O'Connell, who will turn it over to the chair. So we're happy to go into as much detail as you like, or as little, you know, taking into account most time, uh, so as I say, I'll just kind of follow your lead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if you could just hold over one second, please, um, Caleb, so I had a lot of correspondence and I read quite a few things today, and I think in the interest of all parties concerned, if you could be, uh, very clear as to what the board is actually acting on this evening, please.
So, the applicant is applying for a 40B housing project, um, it's going to go out to peer review, so the applicant should be able to make his presentation today if he'd like, and then the board would need to vote on choosing a peer review consultant.
Right, so, the only thing we are voting on this evening, if I wanna make sure I'm correct and I read everything, is the only thing the board is voting on technically this evening is the peer review, am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
All right, so, members of the board, um, before we get into a long sort of winded discussion, I know that we all have our individual, um, individual, um, opinions of 40B housing and where it belongs and where it doesn't belong, and we don't really have a choice on those matters, um, I just wanna be clear that we are voting on who is going to provide us the most comprehensive peer review to these particular set of plans that are gonna be briefly presented to us this evening. Is everyone clear on that?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cuddy said yes, Mr. Chacolo?
Yes.
Yep, okay, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Okay, great, so, uh, back to Eastland Partners, sir, um, uh, before we begin again, I'm going to go ahead and let you give your overview, um, and then I'm gonna turn the floor over to if we have any Abner's present, and then we will, uh, sort of negotiate our way through that process, so if you could go ahead and give us the, uh, essential overview of your project, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This process for us started a little over a year ago, we've owned the property for a number of years, uh, but actually in May of last year, we made, uh, presentation applications for Board of Selectment to, for a, uh, local initiative project, which is under chapter 40B, you seek the highest elected official in a community, and you seek their support for developments moving forward. We worked with the Board of Selectment basically from May through October of last year, in which in October, we received unanimous support from the Board of Selectment to move forward. From there, the next step of the... there, the next step was we presented our application to the, uh, the HCD, the Department of Community Health and Development, or Housing and Development, I'm sorry, and we since received approval, the HCD, to move forward in January, which allows us to be in front of your board tonight. Our proposal is-
Muted. I'm muted.
...twenty-four workforce housing residences in twelve buildings, uh, located off of Auburn Street, in town. Uh, I'll let my engineer, if we have to, kind of go through the specifics of the development itself. Uh, but for now, I'll take a, kind of a quick break and talk about Eastland Partners, who we are. We live in the world today of Google, so I'm certain we're easy, you know, run a Google. We've been in business thirty years, we've evolved in areas with multiple communities, and in many, many different communities, uh, most recently completing, uh, completing developments in Upton, Milford, Oxbridge, and we're currently, uh, building out a forty-B development in Grafton. Uh, it's called Elmarock Estates. It's located off of Wheeler Road in Grafton, and I welcome any board member or any member of the community to, uh, you know, visit it, you know, at convenience to kind of learn more of who we are. Um, so that's, you know, basic, you know, history. Uh, we've been involved in with forty-B communities for many, many years, uh, very experienced in this type of thing, and we believe that this location for the community, uh, and all, you know, makes a lot of sense for the town of Auburn. What do you think from that?
I can talk about this one back here.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess, here, that's, you know, briefly about us, um, I guess I'd ask you that, and the board, to tell us, you want to go into, all of the information should be in your package as far as the municipal impacts, uh, and things that, you know, having to do with the development, uh, and, uh, we can go into that at your convenience, if you like, or we can come to the extension of the development itself.
So, um, just to be clear, I, of mo- all of your projects really have been approved. There's not something that we can, um, sort of, we're not really changing anything or doing anything differently? What I am, um, looking for right now... Is really if you could just have your site and your, specifically tell the board members what we are, uh, seeking to have a peer review on. That is really what we are essentially here for this evening.
Okay. So if, allow me, Mr. Chairman, to turn this over then to Steve O'Connell with Turning Point Engineering, and he can describe, uh, the development better.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, so under, under chapter forty-B projects, um, a- and with many projects, they typically walk in the standard review topics, including, uh, stormwater site development, you know, standard procedures about excessive cuts or fills, grades of, you know, sewer and water utility connections, and although the plans aren't often engineered to a point where they can be used for construction, they are engineered to an extent to allow new consultants to provide feedback to the zoning board that the project is feasible. It could be built, um, and there are oftentimes many conditions that go along with approval of rent and terms of application, and depending on the extent of the engineering plan provided, usually dictates the extent of the conditions. Um, there's been forty-six that had, uh, extensive conditions that required much more detailed engineering, um, and some that have essentially been ready for construction upon approval. These plans are in between, uh, leaning closer to, towards constructability. Full stormwater management calculations were prepared to accompany the application, substantial providing of plans in regards to grading, stormwater, super, water supply, earthwork, some lighting and landscaping. Uh, as you would see in your packets, there was detailed architectural plans, uh, provided to give you an illustration and feel for what the architecture and living spaces will look like and how they'll sit with themselves on the land. Um, so, that is a brief overview of typically-
I made him present.
-for peer review. So, more specifically perhaps, um, peer review consultant would, would review our stormwater calculations. They would review the site design aspects of the, of the plans submitted, um, and they would provide comments for everything that is, that is shown on the plans. It could certainly be, um, their comment about landscaping, could be comments about, uh, turning movements and aisles and, and grading on the site, and then of course with a project of this size, uh, we would certainly expect some sort of review about the traffic that would be generated, uh, from this project. We have, uh, a consultant as part of our team, and we're prepared to provide traffic, uh, generation, level of service, analysis, and all of the typical topics covered in the traffic report. Now, okay, this is your typical, uh, review consultant for engineering. The majority of the, the company does not do traffic reviews. Uh, they usually would subcontract that aspect of the review out. However, uh, they are more than capable of doing all other aspects of the review of the projects, in my opinion, and, uh, what makes it difficult for the Graves is that, uh, they're very familiar with the site, um, and familiar with the area. They are, they've reviewed the subdivision, currently being constructed off Laker Street, and, uh, they do integrate, so I think that's important. I hope that helps you understand.
It does, absolutely. Thank you. So, um, I'm gonna take the step to open it up. Do we have any Butters here present in the meeting this evening that would like to speak on, um, this particular, oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Did you hear me throw that, Caleb? I just know it's all. All right, so do we have any Butters present that would like to speak on this matter? If so-
Yes.
-unmute your phone and identify yourself, please. Okay, ma'am, can you identify yourself? Hello?
Yes, this is Eileen Lassard at eleventh Laker Street in Auburn.
Good morning, ma'am.
And, um, I've been very interested in this project since the beginning, since it's going to impact my property a lot, and there were concerns that were raised that I didn't realize had been resolved, such as the number of parking spaces, number of, um, moderate income housing, and also this proposal now to have additional duplexes for senior housing that have been, well, there's right now in the process of being approved. It hasn't been approved yet, and as well as access to it and from it as far as, uh, entry roads and access roads. At what point am I going to be able to see plans, physical plans, as to how those have been addressed?
Well, the plans are on the screen right now, the entire layout.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna yield the floor to the, uh, applicant, and if they have clearly understood your questions, if they can speak to me through the chair and address those concerns, uh, so I'd like to see if we can kind of, um, just clear some of these up.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And then I'll have the next applicant speak, I'll be the next Butter speaker.
Okay.
Thank you. Happy to address, um, Eileen's concerns. Uh, she wasn't, uh, overly specific, but it sounds like that if she had a set of plans to review, um, some of her concerns may be addressed, and it may be some outstanding, uh, we could be happy to address, you know, anytime in the future. Um, we're happy to provide her a set of plans, um, if, if that's convenient. I know, I don't know if they'll be available on the website, uh, for downloading. It sounds like if she had a set of plans, uh, it'd be very helpful to her.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
The plans are posted on the Auburn website on the Z zoning board of appeals page for anybody to view.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm sorry, ma'am, are those approved? Could you state your name again, please, ma'am?
Sure, it's Eileen Lassard at eleventh Laker Street. I didn't realize that they were actually going to approve, signed off on.
Yeah. So, all we're doing here this evening, this isn't an approval of the project or a denial of the project. This is merely the zoning board determining which firm will do a peer review on these plans. We have no impact on this project this evening, going forward, stopping, um, delaying, anything like that. Um, these forty-B, you basically have no control over. What all intents and purposes of the board members, we can do, uh, negotiating, we can speak with the owners of the, uh, property, and most of them are very, um, sort of forthright and, and helpful, but, um, you know, we're very limited to what we can do with forty-B projects until we reach our, our state required threshold.
Through, through the chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
So, the zoning board does have control over the project and does have the ability to condition the project, and will need, will need to-
Yeah, okay, you're right. I apologize.
Will need to approve it at some point, or deny it.
Okay, so, but we're not doing that this evening, though?
That's up to the board whether they, they continue the hearing and pick a peer reviewer or whether they wanted to approve it without a peer review, but my recommendation would be to pick a peer reviewer tonight.
Correct, I agree. Okay, so, uh, let's be clear that I want to make sure, because at first I thought we were only, I, I asked you earlier that we were only picking a peer review. So we are picking a peer review and then moving this project forward this evening? If all goes according to what is expected?
My recommendation would be to pick a peer reviewer this evening.
Okay, I got it. All right, thank you. So, ma'am, did you understand that? We're just here to pick a peer review? So all the wastewater, all the water management systems, um, stormwater, those types of things would be the ones that will, um, will be discussed this evening?
That, that's understood, and, and I know that there's another meeting about plans, so that makes me feel much more comfortable than that, just the peer group is being chosen. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. So do we have any other Butters that would like to speak in regards to the peer group choice for this evening? Uh, could you identify yourself, please?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, okay, I wasn't sure if you could hear me.
I can hear you now. Could you identify yourself, please, and talk about your concerns?
Sure. Uh, my name is Leah Proudie Muller. I am an owner at one oh one Pinker Hill Road.
Hey?
Um, I had come, like Eileen, I, um, was aware that there was a development going in, and I do have concerns, but it sounds like tonight's not the night to address them.
Correct. So you can certainly make your, uh, concerns publicly known. That certainly isn't a problem, um, but tonight we are discussing peer review for water management of the site.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have anything in relation to peer review. I did want to, um, as a neighbor to the community that's going to be built there, I did want to, at some point, have it be addressed about, um, neighborly things when the construction is in action as far as like hours of the day goes and, um, the blasting that happens from the terraforming and earthworking that happens, um, because it is something that's been disrupting our quality of life. So, again, I know that's not a tonight thing, but I did want it put as a concern of the area residents.
I appreciate that, and obviously that is a concern. Um, you know, one of the things that we always talk about on the board here is, is, uh, maintaining the integrity of the neighborhoods and, uh, making sure that our residents are not, um, too much impacted by things like this. So, I appreciate your concern and it's duly noted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other Butters present that would like to identify themselves and speak this evening? Five, four, hello? I thought I heard a little background. All right, uh, again, five, four, three, two, hello? One. Do I have any other Butters that would like to speak this evening, please? I hear someone trying to come through, but I can't tell what it is. Is anybody else hearing that broken up voice in the background, or is it just me?
I'm hearing it. I think someone's trying to come through.
That's what I thought, too. Um, Town Hall presenter. So do we have anybody that's actually trying to talk through? Because I know we're having a little, I haven't heard recently, but we had a broke up, um, female voice in the background for a second.
I don't, I don't see anybody coming through.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's one thing. You can see that screen and we can't. So, okay, um, we're gonna go ahead and move forward. So, um, is there anyone from the town, um, on the town side of the house that would like to speak regarding the choice of, uh, peer reviews?
Mr. Chairman, Bill Coyle, Town Engineer, DBW Director. Um, I just wanted to offer a comment. Um, years ago, when this project was, uh, a similar type project moving forward, we had the, one of the engineers doing the traffic engineering review was VHB, Vanas Hanging and Brussels. Um, they're a larger company, uh, and this is a larger type of project. So, my recommendation, I believe we have two proposals, one from Graves Engineering that does quite of a, a lot of our reviews, uh, smaller company, but, um, you know, they do a very good job as well. But this being a larger project, I would recommend that VHB be selected for the engineering review. Uh, they can do the entire review. They can review the constructability, drainage calculations, and the traffic review, rather than selecting two different consultants, Graves being one to do the peer review for the engineering and a separate traffic engineer. So I just wanted to-
Okay.
-voice my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And you said that second one is V as in Victor HB, VHB?
Yes, that's correct. They're on, they have a local office in Worcester, and their full name is Vanas Hanging and Brussels, but they, uh, they, they go by VHB. That's correct.
Right, okay. So I'd just like to ask one more question, because I'm, I'm almost sure one or two members of the board is gonna have this question. So, do you think this project is best served having one overall review rather than having two separate reviews, um, so, like, from two different firms?
Right, because they, they wouldn't be two separate reviews. They'd all, they'd both be looking at different things. So currently, we have a proposal from Graves Engineering. They do not have traffic engineers on their staff. So if you selected Graves, you'd have to select another consultant to do the traffic engineering review versus VHB. They're a larger company. They have, uh, more engineers on staff and able to do the entire review, uh, with one company.
Great. Uh, Mr. Coyle, I really appreciate your time coming out this evening and, uh, calling in, advising the board on which, uh, one would serve us best for this project. So thank you very much, sir.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
And I always, I always go, really awesome job and everything. I know we don't get to talk to you a lot, but we do appreciate your attention to detail of all these projects in town, so thank you.
I appreciate the comments, sir. Thank you.
Through the, through the chair, if I may.
On the town side. Yes, please.
So, i- in your packets, everyone has both quotes for both reviews. The Graves review does not include a traffic study. We're still waiting on that cost. So, just when you're looking at the two reviews, one of them is all-inclusive, one of them does not include the traffic study.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, we've already satisfied any of the Butters that we have currently present, and they, I believe, have hung up. So I'm just gonna go around the, uh, chair, so to speak. Mr. Maron, do you have any questions, concerns, or comments?
Mr. Chairman, so, um, just a, a quick comment, um, and, and also just a note of expediency. So for what we have in front of us this evening, um, we have full recommendation, and I call our attention- our attention to some supplemental information that the building commissioner has provided to board, um, based on the recommendation. Based on the comments of, of Coyle, um, I would, I would recommend in consideration that for what we have before us this evening, that we move swiftly towards the decision. Um, I would be in favor of recommending we, um, contract with one firm. It sounds like Mr. Coyle would be, um, receiving the information that he needed in a comprehensive manner from the business that he recommended. And so, um, I, I'd like to propose that we move swiftly this evening, um, to basically take their recommendation on using that firm solely. Um, it's no discredit to Graves, uh, but it sounds like the better choice here is what Mr. Coyle had recommended. And I'd like that, uh, with, with the fact that we don't have any additional butters, um, I think we have the information before us to move forward. I'd like the board to consider to move swiftly toward that vote.
All right, so, um, you heard Mr. Marin's comments. Mr. Cuzzi, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I agree with Mr. Marin, uh, and Mr. Coyle, I would go with VHB.
All right, so, um, before we make that decision, though, we'll do that as a separate, um, motion. Mr. Chacolo, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do not, and I'd like to just make a comment that, uh, like Mr. Cuzzi, I agree with Mr. Marin also.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
No questions.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, please, sir? It was, uh, broken up. I still don't have you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, not to ever speak for another board member, but I believe what I heard from Mr. Jones was that he had no, no question.
Yes, I have no questions.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Bush?
I have no questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so I don't, motion to oppose the public hearing?
No.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
So, we'd be looking, you may want to give the applicant a chance to speak, but what the motion would be, would be to choose a peer reviewer. Um, the, the public hearing would be, the public hearing would be continued, not closed.
Uh, I appreciate that, thank you for the, uh, thank you for the clarification on, um, procedure. So, um, to the applicant, sir, um, you've heard all the concerns from the board members and the opinion of the town engineer, is there anything you'd like to add before we move forward?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, we, we have no objection to VHB. Uh, we, we thought there was some merit to Graves since their experience on the site, but we have no objection to VHB if that's the board's wish.
Excellent, thank you very much, sir. Okay, um, Caleb, has that satisfied all the requirements, Sharon?
So, what we'd be looking for is a motion to accept the quote from VHB for the peer review, and then we would be looking for a request to continue from the applicant.
Okay, so as long as we're all clear on that, the hearing, according to the building commissioner, will remain open because we have not discussed the actual 40B, uh, project, et cetera, or final approvals on that end. What we're talking about tonight is, um, if we are going to in fact approve this particular firm and then the applicant will request a continuation, um, in order to have further review of this project at a future date. So, as long as we're all clear on that, um, do I have a motion on the floor regarding the engineering firm, uh, be chosen?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, I'd like to make the motion, um, that the board approve the quote that came in from VHB and move forward with VHB as a sole, uh, peer review.
Okay, do I have a second on Mr. Marin's motion?
I have a second.
Okay, I got a second for Mr. Chacolo, uh, Mr. Cuzzi.
Approve.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Approve.
Thank you, Mr. Jones approves and I, Mr. Ch- Chair, approve. So, uh, the next step would be from Eastland Partners, uh, gentlemen, if one of you could request a continuation, uh, Caleb, do you have a particular date in mind or anything like that?
I would continue to June 18th pending the peer review. If, if we don't have the peer review results by then, they could request a continuance or make a presentation on their own at that time.
Okay, so, um, if everyone is clear, what we'd like to do is move, uh, with the applicant requesting a continuation of the June 18th meeting, um, and then we will be flexible if required beyond that. So, if Eastland Partners are understanding of that, if they request their, uh, continuation.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we request to, uh, extend the public hearing till the June 18th meeting, at which time we hope that the, uh, VHB material will be available.
Okay, so, we have a request from the applicant to, uh, continue this hearing, open to the public, until the June 18th meeting. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, I, I would approve the applicant's request to continue.
Mr. Marin, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I got a second for Mr. Chacolo. Mr. Cuzzi, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Thank you, sir, and the chair, Mr. Chair, myself, I approve. So, to, uh, Eastland Partners, good luck, um, so the peer review for VHB and possibly the June meeting. If you run into any issues, I'm sure you are aware that our building commissioner, um, will always be readily available to you guys, um, and please feel free to reach out if any issues come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board, we appreciate your time tonight and, uh, we look forward to working with you. Have a good evening.
All right, take care, sir, be safe.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna step away from my, um, camera for one second because I need to turn the light on or I'm not gonna be able to see you. All right, somebody's doing the weed whack it out there now, it sounds like. Okay, so, um, we are technically not closing the 510 hearing, that's gonna remain open. So, our next step is on to other business. So, um, on to other business, we have, um, four thing, um, it sounds like I have a didgeridoo in the background there, somebody's practicing. Okay, so let me get my other paper work out for this, please. Okay, so we have a request from WEB, uh, wait, I wanna make sure, yeah, uh, 430 Wardsdale Street, SWEB Development, requesting to extend the previously approved special permit to July 11th, 2022. Caleb, um, I know I have the letter here, but is it possible to give us a, uh, overview of what the problem here is?
Through the chair, this is a special permit for a solar project, um, I believe the delay is with the, the electric provider, is delayed them. There may be somebody on the line that likes, who would like to speak to it.
Okay, uh, is there anyone present from, uh, um, I think it would be from SWAB or Web, um, that would like to speak regarding this issue? If so, could you just kind of sign on and introduce yourself?
Certainly, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and the board, can you folks hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, uh, my name is Sarah Rosenblatt, I am the development manager for SWAB Development and was also present at all of the meetings for the first round of the issuance of the special permit. Uh, so, Mr. Moody is correct in his explanation, we have been severely delayed by National Grid, there have been no changes to any part of our project whatsoever, we have simply been delayed in our system impact study due to a statewide transmission study that ISO New England imposed on National Grid. It has halted our project for over 18 months now in studying and we are very much so trying to get to the end here. Uh, outside of that, there have been no other changes at all.
Okay, thank you very much for that input. So, as you can hear from the board, this is, um, uh, four members of the board, actually, um, this is a project we've previously approved, um, to no fault of the applicant's own, um, that being delayed because of a state mandate requirement due, uh, or Nat- National Grid. So, I have a motion on the floor to either accept or deny the requests for extension of the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, um, I don't know if any board members, if you want to offer if they have any specific questions, um, before we make a motion, but I-
Sure.
Based on the explanation, I, I for one see no reason why, um, we would not offer an extension to this applicant.
Okay, I agree. Uh, to open it to the board, Mr. Cuzzi, your thoughts?
No, I agree with the extension.
Okay, um, Mr. Chacolo?
Also agree.
Thank you, Mr. Jones?
Uh, no questions, no problems.
Thank you, um, and Ms. Bush?
Same, I agree, no questions, no problems.
Perfect, thank you so much, I appreciate that again, Mr. Marin, thank you. So, uh, you've heard all the inputs, do I have a motion on the floor to accept the, uh, request for extension of permit as is submitted?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, so I would, I would make a motion to accept the, uh, the proposed extension to this applicant as stated.
Thanks very much, do I have a second? Mr. Chacolo makes the second, Mr. Cuzzi?
I approve.
Mr. Jones?
Approve.
And myself, Mr. Chair, I approve. Uh, good luck, we hope you're able to navigate through the, uh, problems that you're having with your project.
Great, thank you, everyone, I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, so the next one, I'm gonna review us a little bit here, I'll kind of refresh our, our memories. So, we have here at 10 Church Street, request by Penrose Properties for a minor modification in accordance with 760 CMR 50.0511 to include Exhibit A dated April 14, 2020 to the original decision. Um, so, Penrose Properties, if you remember, uh, the, uh, people that won the bid on our two schools that we had taken offline, um, Mary D being one, right behind the Town Hall, and, uh, JV, um, over, uh, near like the, the Oxford Street North area. So, um, Caleb, before we vote on this, could you just go over exactly what they are suing in terms of Exhibit A?
Through the chair, we have representatives on the line that could speak to their request.
Excellent, thank you. So, representatives from, uh, Penrose Properties, available?
Uh, we're here.
Yes, go ahead. Okay, so, if one of you could just address to the board what the Exhibit A is, what the issues are, and if you'd like to, uh, try to just give us a overview of what's going on.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, this is Paul Habberty from Blatman of Brokstein Habberty, the attorney for the applicant, so I'm the one that sent you this request for modification. So, the way that, good evening. So, the way that the chapter 40B regulations work, um, there's opportunity for an applicant to request a modification of a previously issued comprehensive permit. In pursuit of 760 CMR 56.0511, the board is required to make a determination upon a request for modification as to whether the proposed modification is either substantial, in which case within 30 days the board is required to hold a duly noticed public hearing, or they could make a determination that is insubstantial, in which case, um, nothing more needs to be done, the modification is simply approved. Um, when did this board make a determination that the, the requested modification is insubstantial? So, I'll start with the 10 Church Street property, um, in, in which, what happened was the, the decision was issued, um, submitted to the town clerk and then it was recorded at the written deeds without an exhibit that should have been appended to it, and that was the, the waiver list, that was-
Okay.
Um, so, just as a ministerial matter, um, you know, we want to make sure that the waiver list is included within the reported decision, so we would like, uh, the modification to incorporate the waiver list. Um, we do have a-
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was that?
No, okay, I'm just acknowledging what you're, um, kind of breaking it down to what you actually need.
Sure, thank you. And so then, there were a couple of changes, um, from what was on the original waiver list, um, to what was ultimately approved by the board.
Okay.
For instance, um, the original request was, the waiver request was for, for the board to allow 53 units, um, but the decision actually approves the 56 units, um, that was ultimately requested.
Okay.
Um, reflected in condition A4 of the decision already, so this isn't actually a change from what the board approved, it's simply confirming what the board approved.
Okay.
Similarly, the, the waiver list includes a reduction in number of parking spaces from 48 spaces to 46 spaces, um, which is also consistent with the, the terms of the comprehensive permit, um, which is in condition A5. We are requesting a slight change in the impervious area from what the original permit granted, so the original permit was a 72% impervious area and what's actually being proposed to be developed now is 76% impervious.
Okay.
Uh, one other change that has to do with the number of affordable units. Um, originally, it was proposed that 81% of the units, for a total of 45 units, would be deed reserved for affordable. Um, after consultation with the subsidizing agency, that number has been, uh, it's actually, it was originally 47, um, now it's being reduced to 45 units.
Okay.
The board's decision, uh, states that the number of affordable units should not exceed 25%, um, which is consistent with requirements under chapter 40B. So, the, the proposal was far and above what the requirements are, um, so this really shouldn't be considered a substantial change either, because we're well within the requirements of what is, um, necessary for a chapter 40. So, those are, as it relates to 10 Church Street.
Right, that, we're just, we're gonna address, um, minor affords, obviously, but so, let's just be clear, so all this boils down to is a 4% increase in impervious surface-
Yes.
A two-unit reduction in affordable housing numbers, and what was the other?
Those are the only actual changes from what the board approved in its comprehensive permit. The other changes were actually changes from the original waiver request to what the current waiver request should say, but they were, those were incorporated. So, there was, um, a, the total number of units was originally in the waiver list shown as 53, but the board's decision approved it to a total of 56 units.
Mm-hmm.
The number of parking spaces in the, in the original waiver list showed 48, uh, but the board's decision approved 46.
Okay, so it's also, so I can see where it's just basically a clarification of a couple of things, increase in, uh, 4% impervious surface, decrease in apartment numbers that are considered to be affordable, uh, and increase in two parking spaces, uh, and really just this is basically a clarification of what was already approved.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, would you like to add anything else?
No, that's all I have, I don't know, we, I also have from the applicant, Charlie and Carmen, if you want to introduce yourselves and add any-
Uh, yes, thank you, Charlie Adams from Penrose, thank you for, uh, listening to us tonight.
Sure.
Carmen Chung from Penrose also.
Thank you. In, in terms of, in terms of a general update, just quickly, we're, we're on a path to, um, to, uh, to get to start at the, uh, at the end of, by the end of next month, so we're excited to, to move this along, so. I know everyone's, uh, that's, what's maybe on people's minds, so I wanted to give you that update as well, so.
Yeah, no, actually, the project has been very well, um, received and honestly, most of the inquiries that I've received while being around town is people are generally kind of excited about it and are curious to when it's gonna begin.
Yes, so you can tell them the end of next month.
Okay, so, um, members of the board, um, you've heard the proposal and, uh, the clarification is necessary, I'm gonna turn about, are any others present that may like to speak regarding this project? If so, could you turn the mic on and identify yourself? All right, five, four, three, two, one, all right, hearing none, seeing none. Uh, Mr. Marin, sir, do you have anything you'd like to, uh, ask the applicant or add to the discussion?
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions for the applicant at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chacolo?
Also none, at this time I have none.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy?
No, no questions for him.
All right, Mr. Jones?
None.
Thank you, and Ms. Bush?
I have no questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, uh, Caleb, is there anything you'd like to add to this discussion before I move forward?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, um, and there are no other, um, town representatives present that might be interested in this? All right, hearing none, seeing none? Okay, so, I have a motion to accept, now, this is other business number two, and it's only for Ten Church Street, okay? I want to declare this is for the Mary D property. Do I have a motion on the floor for the Church Street proposal for authorization and modification?
So, through the chair to clarify, you'd be looking for a vote to approve as a minor modification.
Well, yeah, thank you on the wording. So, what we're voting on is if we consider this to be a minor modification, that can move forward without review, or if we consider this to be a substantial modification, at which time it would require the applicant to prepare a presentation and come to a full public hearing. So, with that in mind, um, Mr. Maron, what say you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I, I don't see merit in, um, with the items that have been enumerated, uh, bringing this to a public hearing based on the changes that have been proposed and what seems to be some administrative cleanup on, um, on, on some of the information. So, I would make a motion to approve as stated, and what I'd, what I'd be approving is to specifically consider these as a mod, as a minor modification.
Okay, so I have a proposal on the floor, a motion from Lieutenant Mayor Maron to consider these, um, individual, um, matters brought before the board this evening as minor modifications, it should not prohibit, uh, moving forward of the project. Uh, Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
I...
Mr. Cuddy, how do you vote?
I vote to approve.
Dylan, how do you vote?
Uh, I would vote that it's not substantial.
Thank you, uh, and as the chair, I also vote that these requests for modification are not substantial, uh, so good luck, gentlemen, with this particular one, and ma'am, ladies. Um, on the next one, Act Three, we have three vinyl streets requested by Penrose Properties for a minor modification according to seven sixty CMR fifty six oh five eleven to include exhibit A dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty to the original decision. Um, so, I defer to Penrose Properties again, if you could just go over those briefly, sir, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, this is Paul Haverty from Blatman, the Brooklyn Haverty. Um, the proposal with regard to three vinyl street is even more straightforward than the Ten Church Street was. Again, this is a situation in which the waiver list was not appended to the board's decision. Um, the waiver list that was originally submitted to the board, um, has been reproduced in the attachment that was included here with, with only one change, and that one change was a reduction in the waiver request for the parking spaces from fifty-nine spaces to fifty spaces. And once again, the board already addressed this in the decision notes, that there'll be fifty spaces in, um, condition A five of the board's decision, so there's really no change to the actual decision that the board is issuing, and that said.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Chung or Mr. Adams, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, nope, thank you though.
Not to add, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, okay, Mr. Maron, um, do I have any, uh, thoughts or concerns?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I would recommend that we move forward to approve as a minor modification, um, as stated, won't answer for the other board members, but, um, if there are no questions, I'm assuming there are no butters that want to speak to it, and so, um, I, when ready, I would make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have any butters present that would be interested in speaking, uh, regards three vinyl street? If so, could you, uh, unmute your mic and identify yourself? Okay, um, five, four, three, two, one, hearing none, seeing none? Um, so, um, I'll just go around the board real quick, Mr. Cuddy, do you have any concerns?
I have no concerns.
Mr. Chacolo?
I have no concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo, Mr. Jones?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Ms. Bush?
I have no questions.
Thank you very much, ma'am, um, so, I am waiting for, or I would like to request, do we have a motion for other business number three, three vinyl street by Penrose Properties?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, so I would make a motion, uh, to approve this as a minor modification, um, for the three vinyl street, Penrose Property Company.
All right, I have a proposal on the floor, Mr. Maron has the opinion, um, that in his, um, in his motion that this is a minor modification, is not a major modification, and will not require an additional for the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
I second it.
Mr. Cuddy?
I approve.
Thank you, Mr. Jones?
Approved, not substantial.
Thank you, and myself, Chair Tatero, I agree, not substantial, um, and approved. All right, so Caleb, do we have anything for the, uh, applicant side yet, or the request for modification people, before we let them know?
Well, that should be it, Mr. Chair.
All right, so, uh, for Penrose Properties people, congratulations, good luck, I'm looking forward to seeing your projects progress. Um, thank you, take care, good day.
Thank you, thank you very much, I listen, just want to echo what you had said earlier, what you had said earlier about, um, about, uh, Mr. Cole and, uh, the fine work that he's done, he's been really helpful to us through this process, uh, as we move forward, as well as, uh, as well as Caleb, uh, as well, both of them, been helpful to us...
Yeah, thank you very much.
...navigating through the project, because they can be, uh, can be complex, complex places.
No doubt.
We appreciate the chairman's support.
We have a report to have, these gentlemen, I agree.
Yes, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, listen, give me like just thirty seconds as they hang up, and we'll move on to the... Four and final, by the way? So, um, we have a procedure recommended, number four on other business, for municipal boards and committees that wish to execute documents in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter one ten G, which is the Uniform Electronic Transaction Act, which documents are then to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So, what we are doing is voting to approve the use of this for zoning board of appeal purposes, is that correct, Caleb?
Through the chair, what this item is, is it would allow the board to provide electronic signatures to town officials, and we could affix those to decisions, which would negate you having to come into the building to sign the decisions.
I'm sure that would probably make everyone happy, as well as you.
The board would need to vote to approve the, this, and then it would need to be, that, that vote would need to be signed and recorded at the Registry of Deeds before we could follow the process.
Okay, so, um, to the board, so this is so we can submit our electronic signatures, which would then in turn be submitted by the clerk's office or the recording agency, uh, to the, um, Registry of Deeds office, um, which certainly is going to expedite for all parties concerned, us going to the town hall, the, uh, Department of the Inspection Services, uh, the applicant, and certainly the Registry of Deeds. I think we're going to find, we're going to see more of these in the future as, um, you know, our kind of new normal begins to develop, um, and I, I think this is probably a very smart choice by the town and the Inspection Services Department to kind of get on front of these things. So, with that being said, is there a motion for, uh, acceptance of the procedure for the zoning board of appeals?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I would make a motion that we as a board approve, uh, and, um, move forward with this process.
Thank you very much, I have a motion on the floor to approve.
So, through, through the, through the chair, if I could, before we vote?
Yeah.
So, the motion would be to accept Mass General Law, Chapter one ten G, Uniform Electronic Transaction Act.
Okay, so, Mr. Maron, um, just so you're aware, that would be the, uh, the actual motion submitted, uh, on your behalf, is that okay?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I appreciate the clarity, um, from the building commissioner, so I would make a motion as stated by the building commissioner to approve.
Thank you very much, sir, Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, sir, I have a second for Mr. Chacolo, Mr. Cuddy, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Jones?
Approved.
Okay, and I'm actually going to take a step, just for the record, um, because we are each individually sort of responsible for our own vote on this board, and I know that the board's vote here stands to approve, but I want to go on record, um, while we are here, Ms. Bush, do you approve the, uh, acceptance of this proposal by the board?
I do.
Thank you, and also, I'd just like to make a requirement, um, before this is all required, that Ms. Roach, um, is made aware of all this, um, when she watches the meetings and signs for it, and then, um, she also electronically affixes her signature, because I, I think that each of the members of the board, whether they be full-time or alternate, should have a choice in this matter, so it's just a matter of, uh, formality, but I think we should have each individual member's, uh, signature before we actually file this. So, um, I think we're all set, Caleb, any other questions or concerns?
Just for procedural going forward, what we've done with other boards is the board members simply sign a blank piece of paper and take a photo with their phone, and then e...
Okay.
Then email that photo and we can affix it, that makes it easier for everybody involved, because not everybody has the same access to electronics.
Right, uh, yeah, okay, that's actually a really good point, I appreciate that. So, as a moment of clarity, um, again, uh, for the members of the board that are, or the folks at home that are still paying attention, actually, um, so you can, like you just said, scribble your signature on a clean white plain piece of paper, snap the picture with your phone, email it to Caleb, um, or to the other members of the Inspection Division, and, uh, we can get it recorded. All right, thank you very much, so Caleb, we have no other new meeting, no other concerns. Um, I'd just like to add one thing to the board for its consideration, um, I would like to request that we send a letter to the town planner, considering the addition of walk-up windows for small businesses that serve the public. And the reason I say that is I, as a small business owner in the past, I recognize how incredibly difficult it is to stay open and stay closed during a good economy, and then to have something like this take place, um, for a small business is just inconceivable. So, thinking of that, my choice, uh, my ideas were that if we can include the option for future renovation or construction of small businesses, to just simply include a walk-up window, which would, um, obviously, the design plans would be, something like the Board of Health would get involved in, or whoever they would consider to be appropriate, that we could design something where there could be an exchange of goods and services that would enable a small business to remain open. So, with that being said, I'd like to send that proposal to the board for discussion, um, and we can do it real quick, and then, if that's okay with you guys before we close, uh, Mr. Maron, your thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, for the, for the purposes of a straw poll, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to taking a look at a proposal like that, if it would, um, serve local businesses.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chacolo, your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I guess I would also feel that way, to take a look at it, um, I wouldn't be skeptical, but, but approach it with an open mind, so to speak, even though I'm saying I would be skeptical, um, I would want to be convinced.
Sure, I'm just looking for something, I can see all these small businesses that are up, um, that could have substantially benefited by just having a walk-up window on the side of their building. Uh, so with that being said, Mr. Cuddy, do you have any thoughts?
I don't, I would agree with, uh, taking a look at that, for sure.
Okay, um, Mr. Jones?
I have no intention of losing them.
All right, thank you, um, Ms. Bush?
Yeah, I would be interested in, in looking at that as well.
Okay, so this is really just a simple request that we send a notice to the town planner or, uh, representing the zoning board of appeals to the actual zoning board review committee, um, saying that we respectfully request you consider the option of, um, looking at the possibility of installing walk-up windows for small businesses in the future, and if they could provide us with any feedback, um, for future review. Okay, so, if we don't have anything else, I think we should, go ahead, Caleb, I'm sorry.
Through the chair, I just want to understand what, what exactly you're trying to accomplish. Are you looking to send a letter from the zoning board of appeals to the zoning bylaw review committee, requesting that walk-up windows be added as an accessory use?
Correct, the option to have accessory-use walk-up windows that would be, you know, designed approved by the, um, the Board of Health, or whoever the governing authority might be, but I think we should be able to give them the option, if they have, um, goods and services that can fit that manner, then let's try to provide it for them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, so do I have a motion?
Just to, before we do close, just to clarify, the last vote for the electronic signatures, people will have to come in and sign that vote physically before we, and we will have to record that at the registry, but once that's done, then we will be able to move, moving forward, we'll be able to use the electronic signatures.
Okay, everybody catch that?
Yep.
I'm assuming we all did? Okay, so, do I have a motion to close, uh, other business portion of the public hearing?
I'll, I'll make that motion if it's necessary, I, I would expect that we could attain, um, excuse me, I expect that we could, uh, I think I'm, I'm lost for words, and I never am, I think...
Well, I think you're right, we could probably adjourn, but I figured I would just even entertain a motion to adjourn at this point, Mr. Chairman. Yes, absolutely, do I have a motion to adjourn, a second?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chacolo, Mr. Cuddy?
Adjourned.
Mr. Jones?
Adjourned.
Ms. Bush? Thank you.
Thank you, and as the chair, I vote to adjourn, thank you very much, everyone, please stay safe, uh, clearly, we had a much smoother and, uh, much more organized meeting, I really appreciate everyone's efforts to get this kind of thing ironed out, so, thank you all for your, uh, very hard work.